So I will call the meeting to order. It looks like all board members are in attendance this evening. If we could stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Institute of Republic, which stands one nation, one hundred and eleven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is a presentation for outgoing board member Chris Hackett. I'll turn it over to Matt Lamb.
Okay, so we've got Chris on speakerphone here. We've got three cameras in here, Chris, so I'll just stand and kind of show the plaque. Just thanking you for your three years of service to the board and all the time that you've spent in the district and helping us out. We really appreciate that. We'll get this plaque to you next time we see you.
I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are the oaths of office for both the new and re-elected board members, and I'll turn it over to Tara.
Okay, so this is just a standard procedure for accepting your role into the board. And if you would all please stand and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Lauren Klaas. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
We're all officially sworn in. There is a piece of paper in front of you if you would please sign, and I will collect those at the end of the.
Does everybody sign it?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first order of business for our rework meeting is to elect a board president. So I will open up the floor for nominations for board president for this upcoming school year.
I'd like to nominate Matt Lamb for board president.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations for board president? So I hear a motion and a second for Matt Lamb. All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, Matt.
Alright, thanks to everyone. I'll take a nomination.
Actually, let me read you your oath. So stand, please. I state your name.
I, Matt Lamb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of school board president.
The office of school board president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Okay, so we'll take nominations for vice president. Yeah, I'd like to nominate Lauren Klaas back. We have a second. Okay, I'll nominate Justin Stavel. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Justin as the vice president? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, Justin, congratulations for being the vice president. I do solemnly swear, state your name.
I do solemnly swear, I'm Justin Stavel.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board vice president according to the best of my ability.
Of school board vice president according to the best of my ability.
Squeeze your right hand.
Swear.
Okay, so for the rest of this, we'll go kind of fast unless there are questions. Appointing of other officers due to the consent agenda be resolved items six two through six eight be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion.
Second.
Correct. Any second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Appointments by the Board of Education be resolved items seven two through seven thirteen be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Other appointments by the Board of Education be resolved items eight two through eight six be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion. So moved. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Designations be resolved items nine two through nine three be approved via consent agenda. We'll get a motion. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Where are all these people who are being appointed listed? For the public, you know?
For which where?
All these whole, all these things that we're doing consent, all these appoint tax collector, school attorney, blah, blah, blah.
Where are they being listed? You mean so the community knows?
Yeah.
What do we have staff, Tara?
There, she does put out a approved notice to the district employees of who's appointed. I don't, we can post it on our website, but normally this isn't stuff that, I mean, if the public, public foiled it, we'd certainly give them the information. It's not normally something that we make purposely public.
Board docs also has it within, like, if you look at board docs, the public can see who the recommended action is being taken for. The activity accounts Stacy is, is being appointed and that, so they can see within the detail of that. If you didn't get a detailed printed one, then you wouldn't see it on this.
But they can access it if they.
Yeah, if they log into board docs, they can access all of this.
Okay, that's what I.
Information as well.
The general public.
The general public, yep, yep.
And the minutes will be made public as well.
Right.
So the minutes will include the names of all these people that we have just approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Um, in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Authorizations be resolved items ten two through ten eight be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Bonding personnel be resolved, the bonding personnel for the 2021 school year be approved as follows. Treasurer for $200,000, deputy treasurer $2 million, extra classroom activity fund treasurer $50,000, internal claims auditor $2 million, custodial employee courier $1 million. Can I have a second, or can I have a motion, excuse me? So moved. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Re-adoption of all policies, regulations, and procedures be resolved items twelve two through twelve three be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion.
Moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Cooperative bidding through G-VAP be resolved and OACS be authorized for taking cooperative bidding through G-VAP. Wayne Fingerlake Subu Tech and Gary One Bosse for the 2021 school year. We have a motion. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Appointment of districts committees and special education be resolved items fourteen two through fourteen four be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Medicaid compliance officer be resolved, the director of student services be appointed position Medicaid compliance officer for the 2021 school year. We have a motion. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Establishment of district mileage reimbursement rate and non-resident tuition rate. Be resolved with the current IRS mileage rate be established as a district reimbursement rate for the 2021 school year. Be resolved, the non-resident tuition rate be established as follows to be determined on those. We have a motion.
So how can, we're just, I'm sorry, you have to move before we discuss.
We have a motion.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How is that determined?
Yeah, how is that determined? How are we voting on something we haven't determined?
So it's approved by state ed. What happens is we put all of our financial data into the SD three, that's our year-end report. After the audit is completed, and then mid-December, they spit out a number that says what your per pupil cost is. And they designate K through six, seven through twelve, and then K through six special ed, seven through twelve special ed. And that's what we have authorized in our policy to bill for students that are not residents here.
And in the meantime, beforehand, if somebody wants to enroll their child for the upcoming school year, we kind of, I guess, give them what we offered last year as kind of an estimate. But unfortunately, those, like Nicole said, those figures are concrete after the fact, so.
And what's the mileage? How do we establish the mileage?
IRS rates. Right now, I think it's fifty-six. Whatever it is established by the IRS.
Yeah, those are fixed costs. They don't.
Fluctuate.
We don't pull them out of the air and decide that's what we're gonna do, so.
Are they pretty static? I mean, do they fluctuate a lot? Does it mileage?
I think that does change.
With it does change.
With the gas prices, it does change. Offer down.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? School cafeteria prices be resolved, following school lunch prices being affected 2021 school year. I don't believe it's changed, right, John?
That's true. That's correct.
Middle high school lunch, $2.45, elementary lunch, $2.20, middle high school breakfast, $1.50, elementary breakfast, $1.50, adult breakfast, $2.30, adult lunch, $4.25. We have a motion. So moved. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Use of school facilities and transportation by outside for profit organizations be resolved, the filing rates be approved, and use of school facilities and transportation by outside for profit organizations for the 2021 school year. Thirty dollars an hour for use of billing after normally staffed hours, twenty-five dollars an hour for transportation, use plus two dollars. We have a motion? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So is this, John, is this open currently, or this is not something that's open, like, this is something that's?
These are, these are actually for-profit organizations, so normally the use of buildings and, you know, the use of our fields.
Are not.
And they usually occur when we have people here staffed for this.
Right.
Just in that maybe odd sense, or that rare occasion, that somebody wants to use our facilities that extends us beyond what we can offer. This provides us some payment back.
Sure.
If we have to staff some, you know, custodial staff because it's a weird hour or a holiday, it just gives us the, the right to charge them. As far as transportation goes, I don't think there are many requi, I mean.
So we do have some requests. It depends on, I've worked with Potager a lot because they have a contract transportation and we have to drop off people that already go there in the morning. It's easy for us to do, so we kind of share those services, but beyond that, it's not, we don't have a lot of that. Bosse does a run for us because they're already out and about, so it only makes sense, or we do a run for them, sorry, so we bill them $2 a mile. Like, so it's very few and far between, and the only use of the building that we normally charge for is people request someone to be on staff. Because really, the custodians are just there to, like, let them in, you know, and if there's an issue to help assist, they're not there to, like, clean up after, you know what I mean?
So like, this would be like the dance recital, like?
Yes, like the dance recital, she's very particular about what she wants, so she asks and pays for that additional staff member to be there.
But for the Hall of Fame, it wouldn't be, because that's an odd, so there's a distinction between the two, and that's different from that, the, the information that you gave us earlier.
Right. It's not like we contract our bus services if there's a group that wants to head downtown in the Saturday. No, we don't do that. But yeah, just so, those rare instances where we have to bill.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Other items be resolved, items nineteen two through nineteen six be approved via consent agenda. We have a motion. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Committee assignments. Be resolved, the filing board of education members be appointed as committee members of following 2021 school year. So we need to establish this now, right? Is that?
Yes.
So you want to just go through these right now, is that what?
I can do so. John, yes?
Sure.
Yep. So SOAR, I think we want to maintain some continuity. You haven't actually been to a meeting yet.
No, I've got, I need to go. Man, I tomorrow's the one.
I got one tomorrow.
It's on my calendar now.
Justin and I will volunteer for that, and I think we need one more for that, right? We don't want three. It's only going to be a pet. If it doesn't. Is there any interest amongst the school?
I would, but if you don't need, you know, several, I don't need to because I would be on some other job.
Our first meeting's tomorrow night.
Yeah, I'm going. As a parent.
Why don't we go through these others and then we'll come back to that one? I'm happy to do Haxton again unless somebody else.
I wouldn't mind doing Haxton either, but it's totally up to someone else wants it, it's fine.
That's fine, I'll pass that on. So Justin, I'll, Justin can have the Haxton. Instructional Technology Committee?
I'll take that again.
Okay. Health and Wellness?
I'd take that.
All right. Safety? The other options are code of conduct.
Safety.
Safety. Pedestrian code of conduct, sound good.
Is that ready?
Off my phone, okay. I think, I think it would be good to have a third, so, so if you're willing to do that, unless anybody else of the three of you really wants a, and Jack is agreeable. Otherwise, if you're going to that meeting anyway, you might as well be on. Okay. Okay, so can we have a motion to support?
I have a question. Why does the SOAR need three and the others need only one? Just out of curiosity.
I guess SOAR, I just say that because that's what it's been since I've been on the board. I believe that L O will present three board members. So I guess it would be nice to have three board members from Oakfield. So I'll say that's why I would like to have three there. I can't speak to any of the others.
Okay.
If people want to be on any of those committees. I assume they're welcome to be, right? We could do more than one board member, yeah, same here.
I think the other, the other committees are also run by administration. So like, the instructional technology is Rob, health and, you know, safety code of conduct is J C. So really, you're just serving as, you know, you know, as, you know, as providing assistance and just, you know, for, for board information. The SOAR is really different in a sense that it's, it's an agreement between school districts. So I, I think, I agree with Matt to have, you know, three board members on there during those discussions.
That layered continuity to it also. So when I came on the board, Jeff Hyde was previously on that, so he and I sort of overlapped. And he's come off the board, and now I overlap with him, and then, which is adjustment, do one second.
Which administrators in charge of health and wellness, is that?
That's actually, yeah, that's Nicole.
Okay, so I think we need a motion for that. We get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion on any of that?
Oops, sorry, I asked my question too soon.
That's okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Haxton Scholarship Fund be resolved, the founding persons be appointed board of directors of Haxton Scholarship Fund for the 2021 school year. So Matt Peterson will serve as district employee, Justin Stavel as the board member. Christine Bouchere, Chad Egan as a counselor, the bank representative, is that anything we need to state now, or?
No, I just think it's whoever from the bank is able.
Okay, can we have a motion on that? So moved. And a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Be resolved that the reorganizational meeting be adjourned at 6:21 PM. We have a motion. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? I think you could just move right into it. Okay, we'll call it a week. Okay, so we're gonna call our regular meeting to order at 6:22, and Skip is here with a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to stop in tonight because in two weeks, we're gonna get together for a couple evenings and explore who we are as a board. And when John called me, it's right down my, my way of things that I do with organizations. But I want to do some awareness building of who the new board members are, who the older board members are, how we all kind of come together, make this work for the district. I'm a real believer that when it comes to organizations, you can focus on the relationships to people who are leading the organization. You can be a lot more successful in getting the results you want to get. Which was clear already in the first 21 minutes, you know, everybody agreeing to do things and support things, and fully positive for what we're trying to do here. And we just want to further explore that on the 21st and 22nd of July. And I just wanted to stop in so you can put a face to my name, and so I can put a face to your names, because I have all your names, and I've got most of your profiles, and so I.
I know. You feel like I could bring it tonight?
There you go. I will come and get it.
So just some background information. As you know, this past year, unfortunately, it's been delayed, I enrolled in the Leadership Genesci cohort. And we had a two-day opening retreat back in January, and Skip was a huge part of that. And after I left being a part of, you know, finding out my own DISH profile and the team-building activities that our class did. I immediately went up to him at the end of the second day and I said, "I need your card," because it opened my eyes to who I am and how I may react or not react in certain situations. And I said, "This would be just a perfect exercise for, you know, some sort of board retreat." Unfortunately, we've been delayed since March, so I know Leadership Genesci's been put on hold. But I reached out to him last month and I said, "I'm still looking to have some sort of activity. I have three new board members coming on." And we have a lot of work ahead of us to do with the capital project and many, many decisions we need to make. So, you know, "How can you help assist us in learning about each other, learning how to communicate, learning about relationships, and learning about, again, why certain people may act that?" You know, it was just, it was just eye-opening. And so the first thing he said was, "Well, let's do a DISH profile on the board members." I already have mine from January, so I will share that with you at the retreat, but it's just interesting information. I know Jackie, back, was it 2013? She was a part of the cohort, so I think she's been through some of the activities, but I think she can vouch that you're a fantastic gentleman. We already talked about agenda, some team-building activities, that I really think will give us some insights to who we are as, as a board. Because we need to lead this district and move forward with a lot of, a lot of information, and I just, I'm glad that I could grab you for a few nights and you can sit back and have some fun, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very hopeful that you enjoy the evenings because that's how they're structured. We're not gonna get into the content of what you're doing in the district. We're gonna get into how we go about doing things. And I think that's gonna be very important to this process, and, you know, I've done the five profiles that I already have. And it's clear that you're not gonna always agree that this is what we need to do based on your behavior styles are different. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's just good stuff to have and to understand. And so, you know, why is, why did Jackie say that? Well, she said it because that's how she behaves. That's part of her profile. And, you know, the DISH profile is really around four quadrants that drive individuals, and we're gonna work through those four quadrants, and you'll see where you're at. But I've got, you know, four of you already that have done the DISH and you're opposite. You do not look at things the same way. And that's good. I mean, you want a mix of how we look at things. And we're gonna have that as, as an opportunity for us to explore that by learning about what that profile is and how we respond to it. As John said, you know, you've got some serious things you're gonna have to work through during the course of your capital projects and things like that. And we want everybody's opinion and their honest opinion, and we want to be able to agree to disagree, and at the same time, move this district forward. When you can't do that, that's a challenge. And I worked with school districts in the past, and, you know, when the board doesn't get along, it's tough to work in a district and get the results you want to get. And it's challenging for everybody. The more we can begin to understand that, you know, it's okay for us to be different. It's okay for us to see things in an opposite way from other people. But at the same time, we're here for a purpose, and how do we best fulfill that purpose that the district is trying to achieve? So I'm gonna have some fun doing that with you in a few weeks, if you're all okay with that.
Sounds great.
Absolutely.
Sound okay?
Yep.
Any questions?
Looking forward to it.
Okay.
We worked hard to get some dates, right?
Yes, we did. So we'll see you in a couple weeks.
You'll see me in a couple weeks. We got some dates.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, approval minutes be resolved, the minutes of the 6:17 regular meeting be approved. We have a motion. So moved. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? I don't think we have any visitor requests.
Nope.
Prove warrants be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the June 10th warrants, internal claims, auditor reports be approved. We have a motion. So moved.
Oh, second.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Reports.
So I don't have a lot to look around today. I just want to talk about the information that John sent out on behalf of you all about the reserve fund plan. And just how imperative it's gonna be coming up with the next couple of months to approve something along those lines. So my plan for you is to have tentatively at the next meeting, a recommendations of where I would like to put our surplus. I know we have one. Again, I just don't know the exact figure. That's something that was probably approved at the August or September meeting once all the audit is finalized. But I want to, I want to let you know what our next steps are, what we need to do, what the current balances are, and how I think we're gonna use those over the next couple of years, given the situation that we're in. And then I also wanted to further discuss, maybe not the next meeting, but get you guys engaged and talk about a long-range financial plan. We have, we approved one two years ago. We have, we approved one two years ago. Things have changed drastically over the last three months. So I think we need to look back at it, talk about what we want. And as part of that, we need to start thinking about our reserve fund plan, but then how we're gonna use that in our long-range plan. So, so I just wanted to let you guys all know that I'll have that in those recommendations at the next meeting, at the July meeting.
Have a question. Do you know any more about what the governor is going to pick back or adjust or?
I don't know. I do know they cut aid to cities by 20% already. Their June payments for cities were cut by 20%. I, we have almost received our full aid. We have a small receivable at year end.
We did. We've seen that or have not?
We have received the majority of our aid, like 95% of it. So I'm not concerned that we won't receive our aid for 1920. I am concerned about the upcoming fiscal year. But we have our list of, of cut items. I think it's just very hard just planning-wise, you know? We've agreed to buy two buses that I don't know that we can buy. We've agreed to, you know, doing a lot of things that now we're in, we're in a holding pattern. And, you know, I can't give out much information because I don't have much information.
When the, when is the date that the governor's gonna make his decision?
So the look-back period ended, but I haven't heard anything. Dan, have you heard anything from, from Bosse's? So I think we're all just bracing for this next year to look really, really bad. To look like GEA, the gap elimination adjustment, where they were taking 20% of your aid. So I think we just have to be prepared for it. We do have reserve funds, so that's awesome. We can use those. But as we look at our long-range plan and our increases budget to budget, as those go up, we already have appropriated fund balances, which is something we all wanna talk about at some point, that we use to balance our budget. So as, when I started here four years ago, four and a half years ago, we were over a million. We were like 1.2. Currently, we're at a little more than 800,000. So, so we're working on reducing our reliance on those. But we don't wanna have that much cushion built into our $21 million budget. So, but we have to do that slowly over time. So that wasn't, just wasn't something we could do this year. Because of, we did cut about $100,000 out of that, but it's just not something we can sustain cutting in a, in a, when we don't know what's happening with our CED. So with all of that information, you know, we'll, we'll be, in the, in that document, if you read what we approved prior to this, it's, it gives recommendation and going forward and where we want our reserve fund balances to be. And I will, I'm gonna go through that again and make my recommendations to you, give that to you for discussion in the next year. And what I think, I mean, I'll have a roundabout number, what I think our surplus is gonna be. I also plan on giving equity transfers, our entire equity, so all of our fund balances, but we have other equity accounts as well. So we have our encumbrances and some other ones that take up some of that surplus at year end. And we can sort of manipulate those in our favor so that we don't have as big of surplus, so that we can use those funds down low.
So the surplus that we're gonna end up with from last year, is, if the governor cuts 20%, can we use it to make up that budget gap?
Yes, somewhat. So we have, I'm estimating roughly, like you guys all saw what I estimated. But that's gonna be around about the number. So we already have that figure built into the budget for the appropriated fund balance. So, so my feeling is that we would wanna cut the remainder of that 20%, which would be roughly 1.8 billion. So which we have, we have a good list going of, of contract contractual items, equipment, and things that we can cut. We just are waiting to hear back.
And what would happen if, after the other look-back period in December?
He could, he could do whatever he wants. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I wish I did. It makes it incredibly difficult and stressful to, to be in this position.
I can see that. So the 20%, if he decides to cut 20% from this look-back period, could he?
He could give us some back.
He could give us some back, or he could cut more?
Essentially. He said cuts are gonna be limited to 20%, but there is nothing to say that. I think we looked at the average GEA, so the gap elimination. When he, when we were in the same situation in like 2008 going forward, on average, he cut about $900,000 a year. It got up to 1.4 million in one of those years. So we don't want to think that that could never happen because the thing is, it happened and school districts persisted through it. So we proved that we could do it then. I am assuming that he, in his mind, is thinking, if he had to make those cuts, we could do that again. I don't know that. I don't know what he's thinking. I mean, everything changes on a whim. All of a sudden, I don't want to go anywhere without quarantine. So, so who knows what he's really gonna do?
Were you telling us at the last meeting, though, that we may need to make the decision to fully fund the capital project reserve before we know what the governor's gonna do?
It's possible. Like, in the August meeting, roughly.
There was a deadline for that, right? We had to make that decision?
Well, we have to make that decision until the audit's completely finalized in September.
And the last time you was, there was a delay from his look-back window as well, right? Wasn't there like a two-week lag?
Nobody even talked about that. They posted it up on the Division of Budget's website and did not say one word. There was no press. There was nothing. And I think it's because he did much better than they thought they were gonna do. And the thing that I think is silly is they're doing the look-back period when they extended the tax return date to July 15. So why wouldn't they extend that look-back period to after that date so that they know? Because he's doing it on purpose. He's doing it because he wants to get the federal money. And I know there's a stimulus package that's, that's out there. But who knows what that is gonna mean for schools at this point? All of my, so we're in the same position as we were in April and May and in last month. And the amount, and I don't know how, you know, in terms of expectations, he's done this with everything. I mean, in terms of reopening schools, he's like, "Well, I might say you can have your plan, but now, you know, we're gonna, I need to know what your plan is, but maybe now we're not gonna open any schools at all." When, you know, in the past, he had said, "If we, if we open businesses, we have to open schools." And in my mind, that has to happen because otherwise, parents are gonna try to send their kids to daycares anyway if they have to go to work. And that's just an intermediary to what's already happening. And there's a lot of data out there about how well daycares have done on keep, keeping the spread down and, and having no outbreaks. You have not heard one word about an outbreak at a daycare. So, so I think it's interesting that he keeps saying, "It's not safe for schools, but we can allow daycares to continue to run with up to 30 kids in a room." So I'm interested to hear his information next week when he comes out with it, so.
So the whole capital project, I don't mean to take the steam out of your report next, in a few weeks, but the whole capital project takes a long time. Why can't we go forward with what we've got now and put this $300,000 issue on hold until the next school year? And try to drag our feet a bit and hear what the governor's gonna tell us? Why, why can't we just put it out the bid as if it's the full? And if we can't do the full deal because we didn't fully fund our reserve, trim it back?
We can certainly do that. I just think it's a good investment. That $300,000 gets us so much work for what we're getting back in state aid, which historically has not been cut by the governor during these periods. So I guess I just think, obviously, we're being cautious. But I, I think because our state aid ratio is so high, it's, um, I, I, I think it would be, because it's $300,000, we're not talking about 2 million. We already have the two, like, the 1.6 set aside for, for the things that we need. And we've already been strategizing on how to save money on this project. Just in one meeting, we've had several different, like, conversations about how we wanna save money and how the timing of this is gonna be imperative to save money. So I agree. I just think that we, we get so much back from that investment that it's, it's hard for, it's hard for me to see past that. I, the other thing that it, construction creates is, is helpful to the economy as well. So investing in construction, invests in jobs and invests in, you know, our, our economy and investment in work. So, so it's hard for me to not want to do that and to put it towards, you know, funding the future when we don't know what the situation is. We can certainly look at, um, there's another way for us to move that without putting it into that reserve particularly that I'm exploring in mid-year. So we can certainly do that. It's just a general fund expense. So we'd have to appropriate more fund balance. So you guys would approve a budget amendment as a board where we would appropriate more reserves and then expense just a lump sum of money over to the capital fund, if that's what we wanted to do in the future. So that's still very viable, but I don't know what this year's gonna bring, so I, I don't know how feasible it is.
Yeah, there's amazing scenarios that are potentially coming our way. Opening up all the way, partially, not at all, what the cost savings would be under each of those scenarios.
Yes.
But like, most importantly, would be what, if we spend that $300,000 on the capital reserve, the capital project, what are we going to deny our district?
Correct.
Because we made the decision to do that. So I guess that would be my question.
Yes.
No?
I agree.
Any other questions for Nicole?
If we have a partial opening, are we gonna save money or is it gonna cost us more? If we have to do some creative thing like half-days and alternate days, are these things gonna save us money or cost us money?
The only thing that would really save us money would be to not open at all because we would potentially discuss it early with the unions for some of the employees that we would not need because we wouldn't need a full staff, you know? But that's the only way I can see it. Opening up part-time, we'd still have to run the buses the same amount, or more. We'd still, we'd, we might have more bus runs. We might need more bus drivers. We might, potentially, we're gonna need more cleaners. So there's no way that I can see we would need less of that staff if we're open. It's, we would need everybody and not potentially more based on what they're talking about for half-days. Because we don't have a mid-date run. You know, and we'd have to provide those for the students that needed their way home. So to say that we would be saving money if we opened up half-time, I think is, is a little, it, it would be, I don't think it would be a savings really at all. Because like, you're still heating all the rooms, you're still cooling the rooms that get cooled. You still have all, you know, all of your staffing expenses. So in terms of saving money, I don't see that as, unless we were closed one day a week or, you know what I mean, in terms of facilities?
Well, that's what I was wondering. So all these scenarios like you just mentioned, Matt, they don't, they seem more costly to me not, as though we're gonna save them.
Yeah. We've been able to do a lot in terms of buying supplies that we think we're gonna need. I mean, we're staffed to the brim. We have Jordan, the Director of Facilities, bought spray bottles, enough for every single classroom. He has enough rags for every single classroom. He has enough antibacterial, like, so, because you can't get the wipes, you know? So he has enough of all the stuff to supply, like wiping down desks and all of that, for the entire year right now. But, and masks, like several other things that we would need for enhanced cleaning. But that's just a small part of it, you know? It's really the time and we need more people if we spread people out for oversight. So how do we save money in that case at all? We, we really can't. We need to spend more, so.
And you may think, you know, school districts right now are talking about, you know, if, if we don't come back, you know, what does the fall look like? And while, like Nicole mentioned, you may save costs in transportation because you're not running the buses and you may be furloughing, you know, people, things like that. The other concern comes up is we're also responsible in to make sure that every household has internet access. And we know around here that we don't. So, you know, in discussions with Rob, do we have to buy 500 of these MiFi's at $40 a month to send out to our community so we can do this online learning?
The school district is now responsible for making sure every household has internet?
But it's, it's gonna be an issue where the last two and a half months, one of the things that the school districts realized was that there's just an, it's not equitable for, to have this remote learning. We just, there, there are people out there that it was, it was a fine platform and kids did great. And then there was an issue with, again, families that didn't have the internet access and didn't have-
Or the family that are not, and they had four or five kids in their house.
Right, and didn't have the resources. And, and believe me, they are going to put the responsibility on the districts to make sure that our, that the education of every kid in this school district is equitable. And again, I don't have any, but what does that look like? And the biggest thing is, how do we make sure, you know, I know, I think Jivat Bosse's was looking at some sort of, um, some sort of contract with Verizon. And, you know, I mean, all of these things are just out there floating around. I am hopeful that we're back here in the fall. But, you know, that could only be for three or four months and then we're shut down again, like we were, I mean, it's, we just don't know. So, um, to, to say that, well, sure, it might be easier to, you know, we might be saving money here or there. Something else is gonna, gonna eat it up. So, you know, it's probably gonna cost us more to, to go into the next school year.
Plus I'm thinking that we're gonna be over budget.
I'm sorry?
My thought is that we will be over budget.
Well, other things would have to give, obviously. You can't, you can't be over budget. But other things would just have to give. Like I said, if we have to purchase these, well, can we transfer money over that we're not using in transportation again? I mean, those are just, we just don't have the answers right now.
One other thing that I did wanna mention is FEMA. I have applied for FEMA. And we are looking at, I, I had to call every single week for about an hour with the FEMA people discussing what, what is approvable and what is not. And those MiFi devices are not approvable. It's only, they will not approve a payment on that. It's anything health and safety. So all of the food type distribution expenses that we've paid for out of the general fund, overtime for any of our, some of our, like, maintenance staff that had to come in and clean, masks, all that stuff. That's all that, you know, we can submit through there. And they only give 75% of what your, your expenses are. So I don't think we're gonna get more than $20,000. And there's a lot of things to jump through. So the fact that he can meet with me for an hour every week, though, is questionable. Like, it means to me that people aren't applying for it because, you know, if, if they were swamped, he wouldn't be, you know, assisting me as much as I think he, he currently is. So, so we've been working through that, but I have a lot on my plate right now beyond it, closing year end. So we are looking forward to receiving some money for that, so.
Any other questions for Nicole?
Thank you, Nicole.
How many you can answer?
John?
Sure, just a handful of announcements. So tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, Jackie, Matt, Justin, Jeff Schlegenhoff and myself, we will have basically an open OA SOAR community forum just to provide info and get some feedback regarding our SOAR agreement that we have annually with ELBA. And then the following Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we will all meet with ELBA to finalize the SOAR agreement that's upcoming for the 2021 school year. So it's a time for residents and, and the community to come out, understand what the SOAR agreement is. I know in the past, it, it has been well-received just because I think there sometimes may be misinformation on how sports and resources are shared and at what levels and to what degrees. So we had that forum last, last year and I thought it was very, very well-received and we provided some feedback. So just moving forward, we thought it would be a great opportunity to, again, provide that forum for the community.
We have a bunch of paper copies, so.
Yep, yep, yep. I'll have it tomorrow for you.
Yep.
Lynn and Connie, this week, with a group of teachers and parents, are interviewing for the elementary vacancy. We have to leave the elementary building, so I hope to get a recommendation to the board for that hire at the July 28th meeting.
John, what, was that for John placement or was it for a specific?
I believe it was for second grade, yes. But we're, you know, we're cautious in saying that because depending on the candidate, who you wanna push.
The best place, yeah.
Exactly, so. But that was, yeah, that was the opening. Next Monday, the administrative team is going to begin the process of the design walkthroughs with DGA and SEI with the major work of our capital project. We, as an administrative team, want to get a solid knowledge of just the plans and the timelines. And then we will begin to schedule subcommittee groups that I had mentioned to you in regarding the scope of the work. So next Monday, from about 11:00 to 5:00, the administrative team are gonna walk around with the, the design teams and SEI and DGA. So next Monday from about 11:00 to 5:00, the administrative team are going to walk around with the design teams and SEI and DGA. And we're going to take a look at the elementary building, we're going to be taking a look at the parking lot, we'll be taking a look at some of the tennis courts, the athletic fields, the track, and over here at the middle high school, just to get, again, everybody on the same page in presenting of, you know, what is the scope of the work, what do we want as an end result? And then we will start coming up with timelines and the meetings over the summer and into the fall. For example, we want to have a meeting regarding the elementary cafeteria. So we want to make sure that we invite the proper stakeholders into that, so Mary and the people that work down there. When we talk about, you know, the, the high school auditorium, we want to have the people that use that auditorium, you know, Wendy and Roger and the music department and, you know, those people that, you know, have firsthand knowledge of what might need to get done. So we're going to start that, that process is in place and like I said, we're beginning that. What's nice about this timing, and I mentioned to you in a past memo, is that many capital projects across the state weren't approved. And so I, you know, I want to thank the community for, for moving forward with this because I think we're in a very good spot. I think once the paperwork is submitted to SED and we have the approval and we go out to bids, I think we're going to be hopefully pleasantly surprised with how low they can come in. And that just makes it all the more feasible for us to continue to do, you know, more work. You had mentioned, you know, the $300,000 really is, transfers into $3 million worth of work here in the district. And I think we're really going to get some good quality bids moving forward, you know, in the next, you know, eight to 10 months. And I know SEI is being very aggressive with the timeframe. We had actually talked about, you know, expediting our paperwork in the SED to get the ball rolling because now is the time. When these phases start rolling out and these, you know, construction companies and these businesses can start to reopen, they're hungry for work and I think we're sitting really in a bright spot for all that. So that's, that's the plan for next Monday. Obviously, we're still awaiting guidance on the reopening of schools in the fall. Over the last about three or four weeks, we have created a task force of approximately 50 members to review this guidance. We're going to go over our survey results and our three-tiered plan to reopen. The 50 members include students, parents, teachers, board members, administrators. And we are meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. I am hopeful that the governor will give us guidance come next Monday. That's what we were told, next Monday and next Tuesday, we will be providing guidance of what the reopening plan looks like. That being said, I have taken models of, you know, Massachusetts reopening plan, New Jersey's reopening plan, and even the SUNY schools reopening plan, and they are very similar in nature. So what I've constructed is basically a three-tiered system in our plan for reopening. And like Lorna had said, the three tiers are, number one, we can reopen in the fall in person with strict safety guidelines. And what does that look like? Another committee will be a hybrid situation of, do we offer both? That goes to, do we have half the kids here on one day, half the kids here on another day? Do we have them here weekly? Do we, I mean, those are the types of things that we're going to have to decide upon and at least plan for. And then the third tier is, are we completely remote like we were this past spring? And what does that look like? So this task force will be provided, hopefully, the guidance that comes out from the governor. And we will also look at our survey results. And I have split up the 50 members into three different committees based on their expertise. So for example, Rob will be leading the committee that will be talking about complete remote learning. What does that look like? I don't expect these committees to make decisions, but to at least provide us some feedback, some guidance, throw some questions out there. You know, one of the things that we talked about is if we are completely remote learning, is that where we say, okay, it's synchronous instruction right now that it is 7:30 to 2:50 each and every day? I don't, I don't have those answers. And what would that look like if, if we did that? Would that help us, would that hinder us? And every committee has students, parents and teachers on there to be able to provide feedback to us. While, you know, students may say, I got to get up at 7:30 every morning. You know, teachers may say, well, that, that, that's not going to work for us because our own kids are going to be home from school. So these are the types of discussions that we're going to have. I am very hopeful that we are here in the fall. Not only is that, can I say, the, the easy way out, but I think we all know and the survey results show it, we need to get back to normal as, as soon as possible. And, you know, granted, there's going to be some, you know, safety guidelines in effect. As Nicole was saying, Jordan has already purchased, you know, 100 face, face masks, or not, I shouldn't say masks, but face shields for the teachers, just because that's what we need to do. I think teachers may have a question, well, do I have to wear a mask because I'm going to be talking a lot and the kids need to see my facial expressions? Well, you need some protective gear, so, you know, so these are the discussions that we're going to have on, if we're back here in the fall, what do those things look like?
Joe, can I ask one question? Do you have any leeway as Oakville, Alabama superintendent? Or is this a one-size-fits-all-for-the-entire-state plan when it comes out?
I am hopeful that the guidance is general enough that we can make some local decisions. I think because we are a small rural district, that we are almost ahead of the game in reopening. I think it would be easier for us to reopen compared to some of the larger districts. That being said, if the governor comes out and says, nope, you can only have six kids on a bus, that is my concern. But if he says, well, I'll leave it up to districts, if you can safely social distance and if you can't and they wear masks, well, then guess what? I'm going to tell the kids, if you're riding on the bus, you have to wear a mask. So I'm, I'm hopeful that a lot of the control is local. That, you know, the board supports our protocols and it's, and it's good for what Oakville wants. And like I said, we had over 500 and some responses to that survey. So there's, there's a pretty good push to, you know, to come back and be as, as normal as possible, but, you know, having those guidelines in place. It's just a matter of how strict those guidelines are going to be. If it is a six-foot social distancing with kids in the class and they have to be six feet apart, I don't know if we can put 20 kids in a classroom. Some of the new guidance coming out says you can have three feet. So it's, it's one of those things that we're just waiting and that, and that's, and that's the, that's the, you know, the tough part about this. If you saw his, you know, press conference yesterday, guidance will be coming, but it, it's got to come sooner or later. I mean, it, it has to come sooner because we need to make these decisions and be prepared for it. So I think we're in a very good place. Part of the guidance that I will review next Tuesday night with the task force is the generic guidance that's coming out of the, you know, our, you know, our adjacent states. And again, I'll try to tweak it as best as we can. I would still hold a meeting if the governor does not come out with guidance because, again, I think it's a three-tiered system that we just need to be prepared for. And we need to have those discussions and there will certainly be follow-up meetings. But we need to really start thinking about what is the fall going to look like? And that doesn't even include sports. It's just, you know, the academics and, you know, how can you make it work? So I'm excited for it. I think there's going to be a lot of good work ahead of us, but there's going to, you know, July and August aren't going to look like they normally do. And we'll have to provide the community a lot of direction and the students and the teachers a lot of direction on what we can and can't do. And we'll just go from there, so.
I think it's good to get as many people as possible in on those committees and in the room so that people understand, you know, difficulties that you're challenged with. Oftentimes, people don't understand. And so by opening that up as much as you can in the community so that he can hear, you know, this is the framework that we need to operate within.
Context, people need context.
Right.
Without context, it's hard to understand someone else's decision. So I think that's being provided here.
So, so everybody that did reply to wanting to be on the task force is on the task force? And like I said, that includes students, teachers, parents, board members. I know you're a part of it, Justin, you're in the online group. Because you serve all three roles. So, you know, it, it's good to have these discussions. And it's also good to have the, the survey results that I, I want to go through because there's some, there's some good points that are made. And, you know, we need to, we need to do what's best for the community and we also need to do what's best for our students. And again, we need to be prepared no matter what happens. I mean, unfortunately, the governor could say, okay, we can reopen and all of a sudden at the end of August, as quickly as he says we're open, he can shut us down. Or we could start the school year and by November, December, shut us down again. We need to be prepared for all three types of those. And, you know, we need, we need everybody's input.
I think the other thing we have working for us is the states that are going to open for us just because that's just how it works. And Florida looks like they're moving forward here. And we'll be able to get a good witness test on what happens in these other states and whether or not we'll be moving forward. So, and we can have a really good plan in place for all three of these options based on success, hopefully, of these other, you know, states. I'm happy that we start a little bit later for, you know.
For more than one reason.
Yeah, for more than one reason. But no, this is especially, maybe it can help us, you know.
But I, I think, like I said, I think we are in a great position. I have to give credit to the teachers, you know, at the end of this past school year, the last three months, they, they were rock stars. And so do we have to tweak some things? If we have to go back to that in the fall, yes. But we were very successful in the online, you know, avenue. And yeah, I mean, things are going to have to be, you know, tweaked and, and kind of polished. But we're in a very good spot to provide, you know, one of those three tiers. And the best thing to do is have discussions right now and provide the guidance and provide that information so the community can make a, make a rational decisions of what's best for, not only their own families, but like I said, you know, the teacher's involvement is going to be huge. And like I said, my main goal, though, is to make sure, to do all of my power to make sure that we are back here in the fall with in-person learning.
Can I ask this question that maybe you don't know? Is there any, do, does the district have to make provision for a family that doesn't feel comfortable sending his kids to school? Are they, can they, do they have that option to continue working remotely?
That is going to be part of the guidance. That is something that we're going to have to somehow, you know, like I said, if it's, if it's the hybrid type of learning, where we say, hey, look, we, we are back here in person, but you, you know, you have that family that says, my child's not coming back, I've already talked with, you know, we've had preliminary discussions, okay. But if you're going to do that, then from 7:30 to 2:50, your child, because we are here in person and this is where your child should be, you're going to have the synchronous online learning, like I did when I was going through my admin. I had to be in the, you know, online, seeing this live. You know, I'm not going to expect teachers to take their, you know, lessons and then post them.
That's what I was wondering.
So if, so if a child is staying at home, yeah, and is supposed to be here, then you're logging in at 7:30 every morning for first period class, exactly.
That's such a scary scenario. Because there's somebody around the kids and, and not even just that, though.
But then what happens to the kids?
And it does, and all of a sudden, is it like a school of choice scenario like there is in like New York City where, look, my neighbor's a principal for many years and they can just pull their kid and go to a different school district? And all of a sudden, if Hilton has a great fourth grade online remote learning situation for a small fee, could a kid go to Hilton? Like, it just opens up a can of worms. It's scary for a lot, not just teachers, I think more, but just a sense of community. To, to be able to say, well, all right, you know, my kid's third grade teacher is, is, is okay, but I, I hear they're doing unbelievable things out in Webster or Elba or wherever. It's scary.
Do they have to pay tuition?
I don't, well, no.
And then they have to take tuition money away from, away?
It's just, it's scary to me that it could open up a can of worms that no one's really looking at too closely right now. Would we have to have a live feed from my classroom at all times? Like, that scares me too because I say a lot of fun things in the classroom and they be misinterpreted. At, 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 at home, if, if a mom or dad just walks in and sees me doing something, you know, you know what I, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not always.
Right. I, I will tell you that, you know, in talking to Rob, like I said, our administrative team, and we're also meeting next Tuesday morning as an administrative team when this guide comes out, we have the technology. You know, I'm not saying that that is the answer, but those are the questions that I think are, down the line, will be easier for us to answer than in other districts. You know, we've, we've thrown a lot of stuff out there about, you know, do you actually, grades nine through 12, make it an option? And say, are you learning from home or are you coming here? Maybe you come here half the day, depending on what you're doing. And if you are learning from home, well, guess what? There might be some electives that you can't participate in, like, you know, band and chorus. Is that really what you want to do? But, you know, do we offer up all the core classes to graduate if the kid wants to sit at home and wants to take these classes at home? But I would also say, this isn't that you can sleep into 1:00 and view these classes at 3:00 in the morning. You know, Mrs. Bergman's algebra class is at 8:15 to 8:45 each and every day. You better chime in because guess what? We're in-person learning, she has to take attendance and I, I mean, those are just, I don't have the answers. I don't know.
But at the end of the day, though, are we crossing a line that's been here for as long?
Well, I think education.
Because it's, it's, if the school district is open and you decide not to send your child to school, what does that always mean? You're homeschooling your child, correct?
Right.
Always.
Right.
Now, I, I, I get this is different, but we've had a lot of conversations in here about vaccination as well. And you can get into the religious thing, you can get into all other different avenues. But if the building is open, it's been deemed safe. And if you don't believe it's safe, you have the right to request.
That, that guidance hasn't come out yet.
That, to me, is where we start to get into some real uncomfortable water on my, on my teacher or just dad. Because if, if this building's open, I'm sending my, my all five, from 3K to 12th grade this year. They're all going to be here if this break, the doors are unlocked and then they're willing to be there. It's not a choice.
And I honestly don't think, this, this state hasn't come out with that guidance yet. What authority do I have, like Lorna said, when you have a dozen families saying, I'm not sending my child back? And we say, well, okay, well, then you're going to homeschool them. My other concern is families will say, I'm not sending my child back, I'm going to homeschool them like I did the last three months. That wasn't homeschooling. You know, you weren't homeschooling your child. Your child was at home, learning from their teachers through remote learning. You may have checked on their assignments, but, but that's not homeschooling. It's a whole nother, it's a whole nother ballgame. And so I'm concerned that there might be families and students that just kind of fall off the face of the earth where we don't see them come September and then they say, oh, I'm just going to homeschool my kid. Okay, well, did you fill out the paperwork and the commissioner, do you know all of it? I, you know, that's, that's another concern that we all, all of us have as superintendents and districts of moving forward of, you know, what is, what is the fall going to bring? So we just need to be prepared for that. The three-tiered system is, is the way to go. And like I said, I'll keep the board and the community updated.
John, then Nicole, if someone actually does homeschool, does that mean that they're not counted in our enrollment?
It's not that they're not counted in our enrollment, but they, through Dr. Lippel, through Jiva, they have paperwork to fill out. They have every right to do that. The learning doesn't come from us.
Right, but do they go in our beds for us?
They go as a count of homeschool. It's not inclusive for anything that goes on our state aid.
Right.
So to get that, you got to come.
You have to go, yeah, to get that.
You got to be here on beds for that.
That's what I mean, yeah.
See, that's what's scary to me, you know, just.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's scary that the governor has made mention. He has used this as a means for not funding the things that he doesn't have the agenda to fund. And saying that education is one of those things, let's reimagine. You guys did great. Now let's think about how we can do this better and I can give you less money.
That's scary. You make the education's maintained. They have not shown a great deal of progress or the building of foundational skills. Maybe they've maintained skills. We're not, kids are not showing great deals of growth. Readers are not going from one level to the next through this venue. It, it, it's not happening.
Starting a school here is a lot different.
It, it, the heck, yes. Yes, it is.
Right, we need good teachers.
Yes, yeah, because the assessments went away, right? Right? So if we were doing great, and not just Oakfield, but across the state, if everything was so great and the assessments would have stayed.
Right.
And, and then it would have really looked, but there's a reason why those assessments went.
Agreed. And it's not the kids who are, it's the, these types of rural schools that need to be worried because we have a high frame reduced lunch population. And we have people who don't have the infrastructure to get internet and their parents aren't home and they have to work to make a living. And that's the kids that we physically can't, aren't going to be able to keep that.
But those are the kids that need the remediation.
They need the most. They, they have the highest need.
When you call on them, they can just do this a class. And I've gotten a lot of that where I lose kids as I'm teaching. They'll just shut off their.
But also throwing, throwing all of the academics and this stuff aside, it's, it's the social piece. It's the connection with teachers. It's, it's sports. It's the extracurricular clubs. It's this, it's just the socialization of kids being in the building. It's a safe haven for them here. You know, and it's not all about academics. It's, it's just about them growing up and, and being here, having role models and, you know, resources here. And just, you know, there's just so much more than just the academics to it. And, and that's, and that's, and that's what's hurting kids. That's what's, you know, that's, that's what the sad thing is. So again, you know, my intention, one hundred percent, is to make sure that we can be open, you know, come September eighth. And whatever guidelines come down, we will do our best to make sure that we abide by every single one of them. And like I said, I'm hoping that there are some guidelines, but they're general enough and it's not a whole statewide thing. Because we aren't like some of the districts down in, we aren't like that. This COVID hasn't been widespread around here or even really in this region. We know that. And so, you know, I'd like it to be, you know, almost area by area and, and even as, as specific as district by district. Can you open, John? Yes. And I've actually had friends ask me, what's your plan in the fall? I said, we're going to be open. And they said, if our district can't open, can I send them over to you? Because my kid's not going to distance learn. And I said, well, there's a tuition involved, you know. But, but those are the conversations that I'm having with people.
I have one more wrinkle question to ask you then. What about health issues of staff? Can they be forced to come into work if they have some underlying health issue that makes them more vulnerable to COVID-19?
It's a whole nother layer. It's a whole nother layer of if we are open here, again, you know, what families or what kids or what parents are going to say, I'm not going to send my kid. But I also have to be very sensitive and I have to be reactive to teachers saying, I'm not coming back.
See, that's what I wondered. COVID-19 sufferers have been given special dispensation thus far in all kinds of ways. Is that going to continue? You don't have the guidance on that yet.
They're building the plan as planned.
What are the thoughts on really making up for, I mean, I agree, the teachers did an awesome job again last year, but obviously nobody would have mattered for that. I feel the kids lost a lot of education that they did last year. So what's, and obviously I know there's two different ways that we might have to look at this, but really, what's the thought of how do we catch up from that lost time last year? Going in, you know, kids are moving into a new grade. So obviously you want to start that part of it, but it's kind of like, kind of almost have to, I feel like we need to start school early just to, you know, get them up to speed from where they were at there.
Well, if you, if you take a look at the state, everybody's in the same boat.
Right.
Now, there's research out there that, that the two and a half, three months that the kids weren't in school and now possibly aren't in some summer program. You know, for most of the grades, a lot isn't lost. You know, the, the lower grades probably, you know, they talked about first through third graders probably lost a lot, a lot, a lot of the reading, you know, rec, all that. But you're talking middle school, high school kids. There's not much, you know, backtracking in their, in their academics if, you know, from, and I don't want to say being out of school, but in an environment like that, there's not much to say that, geez, it's going to take us a whole nother six months to catch you back up before we can start teaching you something new. There's not, you know, the research showed that there's not that much gap. It's usually the lower grades, first, second, third grade. And we're just going to have to adjust. You know, but everybody, everybody's in the same boat. You know, we're, this past year, we've, we've looked at curriculum and, and yeah, is there going to have to be some review work? I think more so down at the elementary grades. You're going to, you're going to be identifying some kids of, oh, yeah, you know, you weren't able to be taught this because you weren't here or I'm just going to have to spend some extra time on these topics. And we're just going to have to adjust. Again, I, you know, we don't have the answers for that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was already like kind of some talk, you know, going around with like just how do we do, you know, is there a, I don't want to say a master plan, but it's just, I feel like that's something we have to be pretty sensitive to at the beginning of the school year. It's how do we, A, get the kids back on their normal track schedule that they've been out of school now for how long? But then just kind of how do you make up for those kids that lost that education at the end of last year? That, you know, it'll just be interesting to see like what those grades are at the first, first marketing period of really just to know, do you see a big follow off on kids? You know, I'm sure some parents have done a good job of taking over and saying, okay, we're going to pick this up and do it. But, you know, with those parents, they probably haven't done that. I hate to see those kids really struggle even harder at the beginning of next year just because, you know, they're trying to pick up for that time.
Right. And, you know, and what I will say as a teacher myself is that, you know, this comes September, if remote learning, like you had said, is not what the teachers and the students went through at the end of this past year.
Right.
Because they knew those kids and, you know, it was, I think it was easier for them to continue on. If we're remote learning in the fall, you're going to have five or six new classes of all new kids. And really, the new learning starts immediately. But all of those kids were in the same spot last year. So, you know, teachers will adjust and that's what teachers do. They're flexible and may adjust. And they're going to know, okay, I have a class of eighth graders in front of me and I'm a math teacher. Well, geez, if I'm talking to you and all of you are giving me a blank stare, I'm going to realize that, okay, you weren't taught this or I need to review it. It's not like it's going to be one or two kids, not. So they're all in the same boat and the teachers will be flexible and they'll just, you know, adjust their instruction. But again, I just, I don't have the answers, you know. I, I am just so hopeful that we can come back here and provide the families some directives in August about returning. You know, we get the compliance and, you know, I'll, I will tell you that the survey results, even from the kids, kids were like, I hated school. My God, I want to come back in September. You know, I think they, they wanted to. And so that's, that's a positive for us. And if we can make that happen, like I said, we'll do our best to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, once you get them in the door, it's easier to adjust.
Right.
Once you have.
And, you know, it, it, it might take a week or two. It's going to look very different. You know, I can see the first two or three days, we're screaming at kids in the hallway that they don't have their mask on. You know, and, you know, it's going to be different. It may, education may not start until the third week of school because we're getting used to these protocols. And I think, I think there's, there's, you know, an expectation that anxiety levels are going to run very high here. And we're going to be so caught up in the protocols and the procedures and what are you doing? And here, take this wipe and you need this and okay, and spacing out people in the cafeteria. You know, walking down the hall, stay on the right-hand side. You know, and it's, it's going to be very difficult. It's going to be very difficult for teachers. You know, if you tell the kids, you can sit at your desk, but now take your mask off. But the teachers may have to wear a mask or at least a face shield because they're the ones talking. And I, we're all going to have to work through all of this. It's going to be very different for, for everybody. You know, so learning may not occur during the month of September if we are back here because we're getting used to what it looks like.
Do you have any indication that they're going to restore the state testing in the Regents exams?
No.
Nobody's talked about that?
I would be shocked.
If they do or don't.
I would be shocked if they, if they do.
I honestly, and I don't think they know either.
If they do.
They already fudge the results for them.
Well, I have to, who's to say my bad word?
I mean, they curve them, scale them.
Just a couple of other items. I spoke to Lynn this morning. Food Link will be hosting two food pickups for our community at the elementary parking lot on July twenty-second and August twelfth from nine to eleven. So Food Link is kind of like a mobile food pantry. And they bring around three hundred, you know, food boxes and so extra food will be available to our community. So I'd like to thank Lynn for, for setting that up. And I want to thank Jordan and his crew for their summer cleaning already. They've really grabbed a hold of what we think the guidelines are going to be. And they are in full, full one hundred percent work mode in cleaning the classrooms and doing what they need to do. On top of that, we are moving some offices around. So we are moving the CSE office down to Jordan's office at the end of the middle school wing. We thought that that was a good move because that is also where the Genesee County Mental Health Office is going to go, down at the end of the, of the middle school wing. And we also want to make sure that, you know, parents for their CSE meetings aren't walking through the buildings, you know, the signing procedure. So we thought that it was better that there was a separate entrance for that CSE office. So Jordan is now moving down to the middle high school wing in Mr. Bueller's old room. And Mr. Bueller now is being moved to the CSE wing, CSE office. And we're also moving Rich Anderson's office, which will be the Genesee County Mental Health Office. We are now combining him in Rob's office, which is also down at the middle high school wing. So on top of all of the extra cleaning and things that Jordan and his crew have been doing, we're switching rooms on them. So I just want to thank them for their due diligence and their smiles on their faces.
Just a logistics question. If parents sign in or how will they sign in or who will monitor that entrance down there that they come in for?
Currently still, still dead. It's, it's going to remain the same.
But how, but they're only going to enter at the far end of the middle school hallway for a CSE meeting?
Oh, down over there? Yes, so the end of the middle school hallway with that, those outer doors will be locked. So those front doors, yes, they'll be monitored by the Genesee County Mental Health Office and then Sally, who's the secretary in the CSE office. Yep. Yep. That's all I have. Any other questions for John? Okay, due business. Be resolved, be attached, listen, be raised, be approved for disposal of a motion. Hold. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I have opposed. Passes. No communications. Good, I think we're, discussion around table submitted.
Yeah, I just want to mention one thing that I didn't deny. We are having the, the lunch and breakfast program pickup at Triangle Park starting this Thursday. Pickup will be on Tuesday and Thursday from eleven to twelve-thirty in the town. And Village have prepared with us to give people, they're going to be handing it out down there and doing the majority of the heavy lifting. So thanks to them for, for pairing with us to do that. It really is helpful. And we also, if people still want to get it at the back bus loop, we're still going to allow them to pick up if that is something they'd like to do, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch all that. So who's working with you down there in Triangle Park?
Uh, the town, the town, I believe, has set up volunteers to, to actually hand out lunches for us on Tuesdays.
Still prepared here?
Still prepared here, yep. We have a bunch of coolers we're going to drive down there Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then they'll have a contact here if they need more, we'll bring more if they need more. And they'll just keep tabs for us, so.
And you'll staff this the same way? They don't have to call ahead or anything like that?
This will be staffed, well, I think we're going to, we're going to come up, we're going to see how many people we get at the back bus loop. But I think it's going to be more like they have a cooler out there. Here's where, you know, if you need assistance, you know, here's the number of meals that were in there. When we're done at twelve-thirty, here's the number of meals that were left, so. But it'll be very similar, yes.
And it starts, what day did you say?
This Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah. Yes, the, yes. Sorry, I kept getting a little.
Okay, personnel. Have be resolved items ten, two through ten, three, be approved via consent agendas. We have motion. Hold. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Be resolved that Board of Education will enter executive session seven twenty-five regarding employment of a particular employee and Board of Education only enter executive session for purposes of superintendent's performance review. We get a motion? Hold. And second. Any discussion? All in favor? I have opposed. Passes.